Good evening, welcome to the work session for the Village Board of Trustees, the Village of Pleasantville, 7 to 8 in work session, 8 o'clock our regular session. First item on our agenda, a little bit late starting, for which I apologize, we have here by Zoom Ben Maslona from Fiscal Advisors. All right. Welcome, sir.
Do you want me to just jump right in?
Yeah, jump right in.
Yeah, and Ben, you have the ability to share screen unless you need us to.
All right, can everybody see?
We can.
Okay, great. So this is an opportunity for us kind of to go over certain items related to not only current debt service and the general fund for the village, but some proposed projects as well. So the first initial document and really the focus of the conversation is something similar that we looked at probably about, I think it was about four to six weeks ago. And this is a representation of the current bonded debt of the village in the general fund, which is located in columns one, two, and three. And it goes back to the 2018 fiscal year. And then what we wanted to do is look at basically trends by layering in the current projects of the village and then some proposed projects to see what the impact might be. And I will say that what we have tried to do with this representation is be very conservative. And I can kind of outline where we're conservative as we move along. So currently, if you were to go back, starting in 2018 fiscal year, total debt service in the general fund for projects was about $880,000. Since then, it's really started to taper off a bit from 686 in '20 to 690 in '21 and down to 625 in '22. For the fiscal year ending '23, it falls further to $447,000. That existing drops will be somewhat muted by the fact that we have two projects. And I say dump truck in columns four, five, and six, but really there's two trucks that are involved in that. So for two different vehicles being financed, I layered in the proposed. I saw it say proposed, it's not permanently financed yet, so it's still in flux. But the debt service on those vehicles, beginning in the 2021 fiscal year, 2022, 2023, it'll likely be about $30,000 a year, beginning in 2024. Then we want to layer in also the Manville Road project, which we just recently sold a bond anticipation note for, for 2.5 million. And here's one of the areas I believe we're being pretty conservative. Because we do know the village has a grant for $1.6 million for that project. When I looked at layering this project in, I assumed that we'd actually be bonding 1.75 million. So if the project really does come in at 2.5 million and you have a $1.6 million grant, we're only going to be bonding $900,000. But we've almost doubled the estimated bond in order to kind of err on the side of what may happen once the project is full-fledged in construction. So we're really area on the high side. So I believe that the figures in columns seven, eight, and nine are on the high side.
Is there a sheet that you have that is accurate as opposed to super conservative?
It would just be a matter of.
The best way to do it at this point, because I don't have various ones layered in. If this only came in at 900,000, we could just slice this number in half. Because it's roughly 1.75 million, half of that is, you know, just under, or just under 900,000 would be half of that. So roughly, I would say 75 to 80,000 a year.
I totally get you being conservative, but, you know, I think the cost overrun of, you know, 1.6 million would get us all fired if that were the case. It's not like a normal allowance for an expected overrun.
So I agree with you, David, in concept, but I will say in the current environment, two things are happening. One is we were fearful that the number would come in for the project a lot higher than it did. And now we have this sort of overlay of whether instability in the world is going to affect us further, so.
Yeah, I don't agree with the idea of like having a separate column for instability or to check that. But when you put it into the cash flows, you can't, you know, it's hard to analyze what's going on with the flows themselves. If some of them are accurate to what's going to be bonded, but then some of them have these big numbers that are not taken out of them. Does that make sense?
So I understand what you're saying. Keep going, Ben.
Wait, let me just, I could do this really quickly. Just to give you.
I mean, I agree with your philosophy about being careful, but it's just easier to see and then say account for what happens if we have an unexpected million dollar project or $2 million project here or there.
Which we do with the flood remediation.
What I've done is I basically sliced this column, I did 60% of it.
Okay.
So it should be a better accurate representation. These columns, obviously, columns seven and eight were not adjusted, but column nine was. Column nine is what feeds into the total.
Okay, thank you.
This project, if Manville Road all goes to plan, we would start to see a full year of debt service in the 2023, '24 fiscal year. So that's when that $88,000 starts to hit. Then there's also potential for two other projects. So column 10, 11, and 12 represents a proposed pool project, which I know is under discussion. This cost of the pool project that I was given to run with these numbers was 5 million. So that is the number that we've used. A $5 million project over the term finance would result in about $310,000 annual of debt service. We have that potentially beginning in the 2023, '24 fiscal year as well. Again, if timelines change, these numbers can be shifted down or shifted up depending on potential timeline. The last group of projects.
Pool and flood. Pool and flood.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Wow, that's a pretty big margin, too. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
The last project, which I was tasked with layering into this, was the Civic Space, which is represented in columns 13, 14, and 15. That project would be potentially phased in in the '25, '26 fiscal year. The dollar amount we've used as a placeholder was 1.55 million for that. And that would result in about $105,000 in annual principal and interest expense. Column 16, which is obviously our total, which would show the trends that could be anticipated. So beginning back in 2018, we were at $880,000 of general fund debt service. That then started to go downward. If all of these projects come to fruition, if all of them are layered in, we would anticipate about $987,000 of annual principal and interest for the general fund, which would start to materialize in full in about the 2026, '27 fiscal year. So it is a few years out, but never, you know, planning can never start early enough for sure. So this is just kind of the ability to take a snapshot of what would the general fund debt service look like should all of these projects come in based on current timelines.
And we're planning to pay for part of the pool by increasing the user service fees. How much a year is that expected to generate? They're not the delta, not the whole.
That's going to depend on what we decide to do with that, but we have two thoughts about that. One is clearly there will be an increase in general. We've also made clear that we're going to have to increase, at least modestly, the rates for out-of-village folks who are not taxpayers and therefore supporting this. And then lastly, our numbers have been improved by what we saw last year. And we'll see whether it's sustained this year by a substantial bump in total subscriptions. So there are a lot of moving parts there. I don't think we've come to a determination about how much we would raise the rates, other than the clarity we had, I think, from community feedback was that, and on the survey, was that folks would certainly be willing to see some kind of an increase in rates. I don't think folks would be interested in seeing, you know, some very large increase, like a 50% increase or something like that, even though the raw numbers are pretty modest in comparison to our.
So what's the revenue from pool subscriptions every year?
Give or take 275,000?
Right. And what percentage is out-of-village? Thirty, a third?
Yeah, I don't think we have a way.
Well, I'm just saying, like, if you said there was going to be a 20% increase in half of that number, right? You're going to, we're going to increase the pool fees by 20% on out-of-village residents because they should not, you know, be, you know, they should not, we're paying, we're subsidizing village residents, but we can't really legally subsidize out-of-village residents. So let's say that we figured out it's going to be 20% increase on half of 300,000. So 150, so is that right, 300,000 a year?
About 275 last year.
275, so.
We had just under 237 actual.
Oh, really?
What I'm seeing for swimming pool fees.
From this most recent year, the fiscal year that we're in? Well, that's an interesting question. Do, when, well, whatever. We don't need to get into the weeds of that right now.
Yeah, I just want to get like a.
Can I suggest, this is a perfectly reasonable line of pursuit, Michael, but I do think what we're talking about here, which is helpful for the context of what Ben has presented, is this is what it would look like if none of these projects were mitigated by a different form of revenue, right?
Well, no, I just want to get an idea of.
No, I understand that, but in the case of the pool, increase in fees, increase in out-of-district fees and the potential increase or decrease in subscriptions are all important factors about the pool. They're not going to very, very materially affect the bonding. And then the other piece of this, obviously, is a policy decision on our part about where and if we would use cash in the current fund balance for some of these activities, right?
Well, I agree with you, and I apologize for continuing to talk about it. I just want to finish this one point. So the reason I think it is important is because what we're trying to get here, we don't know what, there could be other things that happen, but I want to get an idea of the sensitivity analysis. In other words, of how, we know that we're at the peak of the things that we know that we're going to do. We're talking about an extra $100,000 in debt service approximately from 2018 to.
110,000 more than our high at 2018.
Right, correct.
About 300,000 more than, you know, give or take, we had a year ago. And as you can see, the numbers would otherwise go down, so.
Right, but I'm saying.
And they will go down again as you look out further into the 30s, but that's a way down the road.
Of course, I'm just saying, like, in 2018, we were at a fiscally prudent level. We had good reserves. You know, that was a reasonable run rate for the village in terms of debt, right? So if we increased overall pool fees by 20%, that would actually take care of half of that difference in the annual debt service. That'd be about $50,000.
Yeah, I mean, we've run calculations, and it all depends on where we want to go with the pool fees, right? So I think we've run calculations that it would generate a net surplus of 25 to 50,000.
Right.
If we were, you know, some iteration of pool fee increases.
So all I'm saying is that it's.
It's not going to.
Lots of other things could happen, but.
It's not going to knock down the debt service by 50,000.
No, it's going, well, it's not going to knock down the debt service. You're still going to be paying, but you're generating an additional 25,000 to 50,000 to offset the debt service. That's correct.
I agree.
But although we're looking at an increase in the debt service, my impression, and correct me if I'm wrong or if you disagree, is that it's not an overwhelming increase relative to where we were in 2018. Right, given the number of projects that we're talking about.
Sure, I totally agree with that. And that's a reasonable response, which I have too. You know, layered on top of this is the what do we know is coming? And so what we always know is coming are pieces we have here in Village Hall, the elevator, the da-da-da-da-da. The unexpected piece, flood remediation piece is built into the pool project at Nana Hagen, but it isn't built into any other flood remediation piece. So there are a lot of moving parts there, which is to say, included in this projection is stuff we have to have and also then some stuff we are committed to having for very well-understood reasons and some stuff we would like to have if we can make it happen. And part of the discussion in the coming weeks and months is whether we're comfortable making it happen in the context of all the other variables, right?
Yeah, and I think one large variable is inflation, right? Just how impactful is that going to be in the current environment? I think we're kind of operating in this world right now where.
Right, this is fixed rate debt, though, right?
Yeah, Ben, this is fixed rate.
Correct, all the bonded debt of the village would be fixed rate.
And how comfortable are you with?
And we're actually better off with inflation.
Well, but along with inflation comes increased borrowing rates. What do you think, Ben? How comfortable are you with your, with the predicted bond rates that you've used for the things that are some years out?
Yeah, I mean, they try to be as conservative as possible, you know, probably a percent to three, or a percent to one and a quarter percent above where we currently are in the market. But there's some of these projects, to be honest, that potentially wouldn't hit until 2025, '26. I can't, you know, be 100% confident that rates won't continue to go up past my predictions. But one thing I can tell you is that as we start to update this and is on whatever basis the village requests, you know, you continue to update that based on where rates are trending and where current rates are to continue to build in that conservative interest rate as much as possible.
And do muni rates, I mean, all over the news, Fed is going to increase rates. Mortgage rates are up higher, although still at crazy lows by historic standards. Do muni rates kind of track that, or they trail it, or what?
They track it, they do. Generally, there is a lag, but the lag recently hasn't been, the timeline hasn't been as significant as it's been in the past. And I've been now 23 years since October where the lows were in the market. You know, we've seen rates go up in the muni world about 3/4 to 1%, which is as quick as I have ever seen movement. So typically, if you've got a half a percent in a year, a calendar year, that would be quick. So what's transpired over really the last six months is pretty unbelievable in recent history. I will say, though, when October hit, rates were at such an unbelievable low that, you know, any upward motion was going to seem like an astronomical jump just because of how low they were. So I don't know if the market were normalizing, but I can anticipate that the same rate that we've seen of increases in the last six months will continue. I definitely think they're going to continue to go up, though, because the Fed is mentioning again that they will raise that once again.
What is our projection for the amount of revenue that we expect to come from the two or three new ratables?
So actually, the next slide, we can get into that, yeah.
So I'm leading into the next question.
We touch on what the increase would look like with, as the assessed valuation is now. And Lloyd has run updated numbers.
So before we leave this slide, I mean, the bottom line is general fund, obviously, is what's already committed to. The dump truck, Manville Road, and the pool project are already committed to. The pool project, obviously, with some potential to be adjusted if we felt the need to do so, but not very much potential. And then the last column in Civic Space is something I think all of us, certainly I, really want to see done. But that is an area that doesn't have to be done and doesn't have to be committed to right now. And so that's a piece of flexibility we have. The other columns, we don't have much flexibility, right? Are we agreed?
Could I ask one thing about the Civic Space column and the philosophy that you just articulated there? The question is, is there a reason why it's two years bumped down as opposed to one year on the chart from the pool? Where we're kind of stepping down Manville, then the next year the pool, then the next year.
Yeah, I think that's more of a, not much thought was put into that other than.
Okay, I just.
You know, the other caveat is we can't even launch into it until Manville Road is done.
Correct, yeah.
You know, that's the variable as well.
Yeah, so I just wondered if I missed something there.
Well, and if those bumped up by a year, you can see what would have happened pretty clear.
Correct, yeah, I just didn't know if I missed a memo somewhere along the way. But my, I guess my other comment is about, so while we are the financial stewards of the community's resources, we also want to manage their expectations, you know, as policymakers. And I think that pairing the Manville Road and the Civic Space makes sense to the public perception of what's happening in the redevelopment of the downtown. And separating them off by a number of years, I think, would create unusual, I don't know, an unusual limbo about what's happening. Because people are going through a lot of construction right now, and Manville Road, they don't even, I mean, only the ones who pay attention know what's going to happen this summer. I think if it's all kind of of a piece in saying, we're coming out of the other side with this new vision of Cooley Street and Manville and the Civic Space and Semin Memorial and new beautiful walkways and the gazebo steps I saw today are gorgeous. I think that kind of makes sense to people, and honestly, that's the way I've been explaining it to people as well, that is a multi-year development, taking like one piece at a time.
And then we come out the other end with something.
Yeah, so. With a new civics, with a new center, a new town center.
I don't disagree with anything you said. And nobody's saying that it has to be the schedule. It is, I somewhat doubt that it's realistic for it to be any more than one row higher.
Oh, no, I was thinking one row higher.
Right, and that raises, you know, we're going to have to see how this plays out. A lot to manage all at once, especially with the pool project, you know, which at the moment, we hoped might be kicked off this fall and done next summer. Now, for regulatory approval reasons, almost certainly, that's not the case. So when these things collide together, we start to stretch the realistic capacity to oversee and manage it.
So in terms of administrative oversight.
And just making sure it gets done right and dealing with the endless, everyday logistical issues that come up and all of that. So at any rate, so I think bumping that up one year is obviously a worthy goal. All right.
Just kind of continuing with what the impact could be for a homeowner. Eric had asked me to put together just a quick chart. Basically, we're looking at the current assessed value, the village is $122,543,000. And then I looked at each of the projects based on average cost, which is actually average bonded cost, cost per 1,000 assessed value, and then what that cost would translate to a homeowner at 47. So each of the projects that we brought over from the prior page are listed here. The trucks, Manville Road, Pool Project, and Civic Space to give an idea of what the potential year-over-year impact could be based on, obviously, our current set of assumptions. So it just kind of gives a second view of not only the assessed value, but then also the cost or the impact per the average home as well. Now, in total, all the projects together would be just right around $206 per year. And again, this obviously all don't hit in the same year or phased in over a number of years. But it just gives, in total, what that potential looks like.
And then, Ben, are you able, are those cells tied to the current assessed value? Could you increase that by a number? Would that ripple down? Can you put in 125 million so we can see where that?
So it knocks $5 off the total. So and again, just to be clear, correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, this is assuming, does not take into account potential other revenue sources. In the case of the pool, as we were talking with David.
Right, right.
Does it include, does it subtract out the Manville Road grants?
Yes, so this would be based on.
The net after the grant?
The net of what we're actually bonding, correct?
Okay.
Yeah, so just because the media is here, I want to be clear. What we're looking at is if we did nothing to compensate, including not, we're going to look at this in a second, but we have not yet talked about the increase in revenues that's coming from buildings that are just completed or being built now, as well as increasing pool fees to improve revenue to partially offset the debt cost of the pool. This is the number. It is not, in fact, what the average homeowner will actually pay in any given year more than what they're paying now, because we're doing other things to ameliorate that number.
Well, yeah, increasing from 122 million to 125 million of assessed value, that's layering in the development projects as well.
So you can see, those things are obviously highly beneficial to the tax base, especially in comparison to the possibility that it declines. But it takes a lot, a lot more than we're seeing to move the needle in a really big way.
But then the, what happens when you take, when you add 25 to 50,000 dollars of revenue for the pool to those numbers?
Right, and that would lower what we're, you know, what would be needed.
The 50,000 would lower it by about half, right?
Right, or what we would need from the tax levy, you know.
Well, the 50,000 dollars in revenue would affect the potential tax increase. It's not going to affect the bond rate very much.
No, it's not going to affect the bond rate, but the bond service is 100,000 dollars more. So it'd offset half the bond service.
Half the increase in the bond.
Half the increase in the bond service, correct.
Yeah, I agree.
And to add to David's point, we're still holding out some hope for infrastructure, infrastructure money, right? I mean, and applications and.
From your mouth to whoever's ears.
Well, yeah, we discussed working with a grant writing consultant on that, and there's an awful lot of federal infrastructure money that is being doled out right now.
So don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to.
Flutter remediation project fits well within.
I'm not trying to throw cold water on this, I want to see these projects happen. I am long-term cautious about the variability in the actual costs of achieving it, the variability in the bond rates, the variability in people's enthusiasm for joining the pool or vice versa, you know, there are all these variables, just that is the case for any business. But, you know, as Nicole already said, the aggregate numbers are not the kind of numbers that say, whoa, you know, because in part, they're numbers we've seen before and seen rather recently. That said, there are a whole lot of risk factors we confront along the way. And, you know, just for example, one big one in our annual costs is the impact of employee benefits, especially healthcare and our contribution to the state pension fund. I remember with a little PTSD what happened 2008, 2009, when our contributions to the pension fund, like everybody's, skyrocketed like hundreds of percent because the investment market for the state pension funds had tanked. So nobody's predicting that, I'm not predicting that either, other than, the good news for the Village of Pleasantville is the numbers are small enough that it's not crazy numbers with a zillion zeros behind it. And the bad news about that is it doesn't take much to get out of whack.
Right, but on the other side, we also have to remember that we're not factoring in economic growth. Right, but on the other side, we also have to remember that we're not factoring in economic growth that's we've seen take in place. So the increase in the sales tax over what we expected the last couple of years has been pretty significant. That's left us with a very strong reserve fund right now.
And we have some cash that we could throw at some of these projects, so.
Well, it doesn't, I mean, yeah, on the whole, this does not strike me as bad news. It strikes me as pretty good news, except that there's the known unknowns and the unknown unknowns.
I totally agree.
No, I mean, I think, yeah, and so if if we were not in a, if we're not discussing a government project, and this was the private sector and I was working on this as an investment, I'd be thrilled with all of this. I think because there are, there's a segment of our population that's extraordinarily sensitive, extraordinarily sensitive to any potential increase in taxes, even if it's under the tax cap. I just want to be careful that we are adequately conveying both the risks, but then also the upsides going forward, all the mitigating effects and the potential effects of economic growth. And it's only for that reason, because some people tend to take the worst number that they hear and then repeat that frequently.
I mean, I think we're all sensitive to any recent taxes. We're all.
Yeah, nobody likes taxes.
Look, we're 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 in a situation, I mean, it's writ large just right now, where so many of the good things about this community, both the very historic good things about this community and and new things that the community has done in the last two decades have put us in a position where a whole lot of people want to live here, and it's been seen clearly in the real estate market right now. But it's also driving up costs in a very significant way. And we certainly are in a circumstance where a whole lot of people who live here perhaps couldn't afford to buy the houses they live in if they had to do so today. And I can tell you from direct conversation with quite a few people that there are a lot of people who who live here because they want to be here, they care about the place, they feel like it's the right place for their family, but they struggle every day to make it happen. So it's it's not an environment where it's easy to increase anybody's costs, but at the same time, we also have to challenge the desire, the goal, and I think the imperative, to leave the community changed in in ways that tool it up to be better both now and in the future. So that's in the eye of the beholder, there will always be controversy about that at the perimeter of the discussion. But as as Michael already pointed out, I think we have strong community support for the idea of this civic space, and I agree that it's a kind of a a piece that is connected to all these other things that have been done.
So Shane, is it accurate to say that there are many communities in this county that are losing schoolchildren, that the number has been declining year over the year for the last several years? And, you know, one, I think one of the testaments, not to me or anything that I've done, probably not to anybody, but Peter.
I don't know about that.
Your lengthy service on the board, is that the community has invested in itself. And it's doing things to improve the downtown, to make this a more attractive village to outsiders to come and eat, to come and spend money. That's what makes it a walking village in the 20th, 21st century outside of New York City. And sometimes, like the idea of paying for a new pool at, you know, nearly $5 million once we've done fund abatement, that's a hard thing to do. But it's the aggregate effect of all of these individual pieces that makes it a great place to live. And if we can find a way to not make it a more expensive place to live, that would be great, too.
All right, so before we burn up too much of Ben's time, as Brett, we already have. What more do you need to tell us before we release you from this bondage, Ben?
Just, you know, wanted to mention that some of the metrics, and it's probably easier if I maybe send these to Eric and him to distribute, but, you know, I often get questions about when when there's potential projects about the metrics and where would Moody's view the bond rating if we added certain levels of debt service? So in every single metric I've looked at, as far as debt is a percentage of full value, debt service is a percentage of operating revenues, and then net net direct debt. All of them, the village is well below the median levels for double A rated communities. And even if the village added in and layered in all of the projects on this list at the current estimated amounts, you would still be below those metrics. So that's just a feather in your cap, I will say, that, you know, the village has managed projects and managed those types of communities very well to set you up where if if you do decide to undertake these projects and you're rated by Moody's Investor Services before going to bond, this would not be something that would look negatively upon you as you're well below those other communities that are the same same sort of population, demographic, and assessed full value range as you.
Great, well, that's a nice note to leave us upon.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So Ben, you'll send this stuff through Eric and he'll distribute it. But as always, thank you very much for your good and helpful counsel, as always.
Great. Appreciate it, and have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Take care.
Yeah, sorry for dragging that out.
No, it's okay.
We got everything in the public record.
All right.
Budget.
Yeah.
I almost forgot about that for a moment.
Miraculously, we're we're only six minutes behind the predicted schedule, even though we started 10 minutes late.
There you go.
Administrator Morrissey, on the subject of outstanding FY '23 budget items.
Sure. So we were, one of the outstanding items is how much we potentially want to transfer to a capital reserve fund. We are carrying a pretty robust general fund fund balance. And we've carried it through COVID, obviously, trying to give ourselves as much flexibility as as we possibly can. But I think we're at a place now in our fiscal policy reads. We created a capital reserve fund a number of years ago. And before I got here, it was funded and they, the the village board would add to that when possible. And I think we're in that position right now. And the capital reserve fund, you know, obviously, we we allocate fund balance, and it can be used for equipment, it can be used for capital projects, it can be used for repairs to village facilities. So I think we're comfortable allocating anywhere from $500,000 to $600,000 from our our fund balance to that capital reserve fund as part of the final budget. So if the board's inclined, I mean, it still allows.
What we saw did not assume that we were gonna do that, correct?
Which?
The the analysis that we just went through.
Correct, I mean, that that's kind of outside of our debt service. Basically, it's a savings account, and we would spend, and it's reserved specifically for capital items, which are relatively broad definition within the the capital reserve account. And again, we've done, the village has a history of funding it, and and the way that our fiscal policy reads is when we have the ability to do so, we we should contribute to it, so. Anything to add to that, Norine, or?
No, just as we have this continued discussion, we do have ARPA funds. Our first reporting is by the end of April. We received 370 last summer, and we're gonna get a second payment this summer. So just keep in mind, as we talk things out, that we do need to assign.
Yep.
That's a good point.
Can we set up a time to like go through that systematically with ARPA? Because while I know that the rules have been relaxed considerably, and we can apply that to many things that we're doing now, there are some things specifically that we talked about that are that are small relatively, but I'd like to sure make sure that they get.
Absolutely, and and some of the bigger capital projects that we have on the schedule, you know, I think we talked about the Nana Hagan Brook Reconstruction Project. We're gonna have the village Jeff come in and talk in detail about the project. And the the police chief has talked about the big communications upgrade project. It's part of the budget, but we'll have him in for a work session, go over the details, so there will be an opportunity to do that, no doubt.
Yeah, so I mean, but also, can we just take a work session item for looking at the line items on specifically our ARPA project? After we understand the details of all of what we could do, then talk through what's gonna actually go there.
If I'm not mistaken, at this point, we can do almost anything.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Below $10 million, except it's up for grabs. And I will say, I hard to imagine they reach as far down the food chain as us, but you're certainly reading the paper, the idea of clawbacks of ARPA money.
So we should spend it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right?
And and we we have projects, I mean, it's not like we're.
I just want to make sure that we do something, because the spirit of the the law, you know, the legal definition is pretty expansive now, but the spirit was also, you know, sort of recovery, putting people back to work, mitigating the effects, the health effects of the pandemic. And there's a couple of those things that I think we could still do for low dollars that we should include.
But I think also considering that we're talking about, you know, the upcoming projects and the impact that that could have on residents in terms of possible tax increase, I think that's something to consider also in terms of the impact of the pandemic across the community. You know, trying to mitigate that as much as possible.
Sounds good. So are the board supportive of the the idea of moving, say, a half a million?
Say 600,000?
600,000?
I certainly am.
Okay.
Sounds prudent.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Second budgetary topic, which may be akin to the tentative budget, but probably not, probably more of a allocation to a capital project. But right now, we have the two pay stations. We have everything set up to eventually install a third right next to the gazebo and a topic of the farmer's market to to charge, and also just the convenience factor of folks who are parking on that median are making it probably necessary to to move forward and acquire another, a third pay station. So that's that's about 35,000 to 40,000. I mean, obviously, generates revenue, it'll it'll eventually pay for itself. But I think we're at a place right now where it's probably prudent to move on that that third pay station.
Yeah, I mean, we always envisioned three, and then we said, well, let's buy the two at the ends for starters. Two things feel like they're making more more urgent. The farm market folks pointed out that you could easily generate a line of people trying to pay with with only one unit, since the other unit is way at the other end and not not probably useful. And that's a reasonable argument. And secondly, you realize that folks who park, you know, somewhere near the gazebo with intention to go across the street to the post office or or the stores or restaurants that are on the other side would either, at this point, have to walk out of their way one way or the other in order to pay at the unit. And so it certainly feels like we should do it, the conduit's all in for all of it anyway, so.
That's good.
No, I'm just, it it does seem like a situation where there's only a problem for a couple hours of the week, right? It's not, it's not, it's not a pressing matter, except during the farmer market.
Well, so, I mean, that's certainly one of the things that generated the review. But the the reality is, if you parked on the track side of the median anywhere in the middle with intention, say, to go to the post office.
Yeah.
You would have to walk quite, you know, a distance out of your way, nothing horrifying, but either over towards the train overpass or all the way to the other end by by Manville in order to achieve that. And I would say for, you know, the quick in and out visit to something that feels like a frustration.
Well, the meters are still on the other side, right?
Right, pay with quarters.
Right, yeah.
But they're, you know, in the circumstance that they're unavailable or whatever, so.
I'm just thinking about a comparison to like Portchester's parking lot, which would not, is bigger than that and does not have three pay stations. I don't know, I'm just thinking about, which which never bothers me when I'm there, I know it's just an anecdote, but I don't know, a third, because it just seems like a lot for actually for relatively small space. Three pay stations, just for the just for the southern.
We have two two pay, we have two pay stations in it, no, it's for the entire length between Bedford and Manville.
But the northern part is eventually not gonna be a parking lot.
But it will still, I mean, clearly, we need that one, because that's where you go to the train, right?
But it's on, it's even on the southern end of the.
Right, and then we have one all the way, all the way at the other end, so.
But I think the point about, I'm sorry.
I'm just thinking about aesthetics and how many of these we need.
Well, I think maybe the thing to think about is what happens when that end of the parking lot is no longer a parking lot? Can it be moved, can it be repurposed, or is it? So then it would just be for a few spots then, or not even?
You can, you can pay for, you can pay for anywhere, any parking on the entire, that's not a lot in any of these gizmos. It's not specific to spaces.
Right, right, but just functionally. So so I'm sorry, Eric, but can you explain again where this would be located?
Right, right at the.
Just south of the gazebo.
Exactly, yep, southeast of the gazebo.
On the side where the new steps for the gazebo have been built.
So still on the southern end of the parking lot, then?
Yes.
Okay, so in that sense, it would still serve a purpose.
I mean, what has got to be? Is it 150 feet from the other one to the north and longer than that to the other one to the back?
Yep.
Is that an impossible trip? It certainly isn't, but I I can, as perhaps we all know from our own lives, but certainly anecdotal reports, the 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 actual cost of parking is for many folks less important than the frustration factor associated with achieving it. And that honestly is one of the things that has caused over many years, people say, don't get rid of the meters at the head of every space. I want to be able to get out of the car, put a quarter in the meter right at the head of my space. I don't want to do what they make me do in New York City, you know, go down the block, find a gizmo, whatever, so.
So it seems, it just feels to me like we have meters on one side with quarters, the Pango app for anyone, anywhere, and already two pay-in displays in a lot that's not that big. It's just, see, it feels like we have good options.
Maybe we should take a look, I mean, because $40,000 is a nice chunk of change.
I I personally think we ought to do it. Others disagree, feel, you know, it's a free country.
You probably have more time to think this through.
You know, partly, I'm responding to what I hear from folks, and partly, I'm responding to the reality that we're taking a circumstance where what had formerly been free parking after 3 o'clock all day on weekends is now paid parking. The benefit to the community is that it's available parking earlier than than 3, from 10 to 3 on weekdays. That clearly is a benefit. After 3, certainly, the anecdotal evidence that paying after 3 and paying on Saturday is viewed by people negatively. But of course, that's negative because why should they have to pay? Our job is to look at the big picture of supply and demand and how to manage that. And we clearly are creating problems further to the fat book, the high cost of free parking, by creating a circumstance where lots of folks are using it for long-term parking. So that's kind of where we are. So the question is, do you do you turn the valve that says, we're gonna start charging in this location in order to address the supply problems, without turning the valve to say, even though we're charging you, we're gonna make it as as convenient as we can?
As easy as possible.
You're quite right that it's not so so inconvenient to walk down and do the thing. I can tell you, having, in front of my day job office here on Wheeler Avenue, I see people all the time, you know, using the QR code, trying to get the Pango app, and and in in many cases, certainly, shout out to Pango, it's a great, great thing once you get it set up. For the person who says, oh, I don't have a quarter, I see I could do this, it's project. A short project, but it produces the level of friction that says, eh, so that's kind of where I am.
Okay, so it would be another one of these, the same style, large, kind of a, and it would be south on the median?
I don't know, I'm I'm not sure either.
Another like large, black item.
Does it have to, do we have to make the decision right now? Can we put it off for a little bit?
I'm convinced we should do it. You guys feel otherwise, we can put it off, you know, it's it's a majority vote, for sure.
I'm not certain we shouldn't, but I'm I'm definitely not convinced yet.
I'm I'm not trying to kill the idea, I just, it's the first we've heard of it, and it's.
So and and the issue is, we've looked at the issue a little more carefully this week, based on the comments of the farm market and based on, I mean, the the painful circumstances. If a transaction for an individual person takes a minute and a half, which is maybe optimistic, but not bad. If you have 10 people in line, that means that the person waited 15 minutes just to get up there. So that's not usually a problem, that doesn't seem to be a problem. We have two, as you know, in the lot between Holy Innocence and the Bagel Store. And, you know, occasionally, you'll have have to wait for it, but not often, it's a smaller lot. They're closer to one another, but I will tell you that I can speak for myself, and I I am. I can speak for myself and I, I, I am in that zone all the time. It's like, ah, these machines are so slow, when in fact.
So we have two in that lot? And what about the, the lot across Manville?
We have two in that lot as well, so that you can walk out to Manville or walk out the stairs that take you up behind Wells Fargo. And again, that was not driven by the total number of spaces, especially in the lot over, over by Manville, more based on the idea that we were trying to avoid asking people to walk in, in, in a noticeably wrong direction to pay and then have to retrace their steps.
So this is a, a spot number machine, not a pay and display machine?
It's a type in your license plate.
License plate.
So it's the fastest.
So it's like the Matt Kisco one, right?
It's like the, it's, it's the same. And we could do that with the ones we have. Instead of the pay and display, I don't know, we might need some new hardware in it.
That, that's.
Well, because what you said is, right, they should be at the exits to the plaza, at the places people are most likely to walk out, right?
Right, right.
So, I mean, if you make, the dynamics have changed, but now we're in a circumstance with the plaza where on the commuter side, soon to be available as transient, you have mostly three points of likely exit. The train station, the crosswalk to the post office side, or the south end over to Taco Project and, and those emporiums down there. Some years back, it didn't quite feel that way. Now we're seeing, as you panelists have noticed, high demand at the south end that we didn't have before because of the vibrancy of some of the activities down there, which is, is great, but it changed the dynamic.
With the new tree, just thinking about aesthetics, would the new tree plantings sort of cover some of that on that slim median?
Near the gazebo?
Near the, yeah, the proposed new location.
No, we, we were planning on doing planting there, no trees, but bushes and.
Gazebo, super stripes on it or camouflage. Can I ask a related question while they're contemplating their votes? We're putting in charging stations for electric vehicles.
I was going to ask that, too.
Level one, level two, or fast chargers?
The level two. We looked into the level three, talked to a lot of municipalities in Westchester Power, they recommend doing the level two chargers. So we're going to go after grant funding. Typically, they had a pretty robust grant program last year, the state, that is. And we're waiting for their budget to be finalized, but there's no indication of that.
While you're checking that, since the chief is here, can you also check the cost of putting a level three charger in the municipal lot to quick charge future police vehicles?
Sure.
Because that will solve your problem of downtime, if you can charge to 70 or 80% in 15 minutes.
Yeah. And, and the issue here was getting the, the amount of electricity that you need to the area.
Right.
And those will be on the south side by this proposed new parking meter as well?
That would be the north median, north of the gazebo.
Yeah.
For, for spaces to machines.
Right. They're, they're not on the same side as the stairs. They're on the side of the old stairs.
Okay, spread out. So the, our, our built electric structures will be spread out around the perimeter. All right. Got it.
We can revisit at, you know, at the next work sessions.
Or, or just decide right now, whatever.
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with it.
I just had to process the news. I had to visualize it. I had to visualize.
As long as they're at the three exits, that makes sense.
You almost, you almost need to be opposed just to create, you know, some balance.
Some interest, yes. All right, on the post.
All right. Go ahead and buy it, Morrissey.
All right.
All right.
Make sure it really stands out. Ugly. Just kidding.